Tonight's activity and that will be available for viewing on Sorento Community TV. Some, a few of you are already familiar with that and you've recorded, you've recorded information sessions for voters on Sorento Community TV. So we'll, we'll get underway with, as I said, we've set aside between three to five minutes. My role is to time that. And if, and if my skills in that regard drop back to what they were when I used to umpire junior cricket, some of you might get a minute or two longer because I tended to make mistakes in counting one to six and watching what else was going on.
Are you able to give us like a minute before it should end, just say minute to go, something?
Oh, yes. I'll even set the timer on my phone.
Oh, nice. I have a nice buzzer.
We can certainly do that. So Susan, perhaps I'll just run through, I'll list off your names for people who don't have an agenda for tonight and people, I'll list them out in the order that people are speaking. Susan Bissinger will be first off and she'll talk to us. Michelle Cheers is also a candidate. Mark Davis will follow that. Hugh Fraser, who's the current councillor, one of the current councillors for Napaian. Simon Mulvaney will follow Hugh, followed by Gary Norton and then finally Sarah Race. But so Susan, over to you. If you could start the ball rolling and talk to us about what matters to you and why you chose to nominate as a councillor.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, before you go, everybody else, the rule for the evening, please, microphone off unless you're speaking. And that way it ensures there's no interference in the process. Thank you. Susan, back to you.
Yes. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Susan Bissinger, candidate for the Pion Ward. The things that are important to me are very tangible things. I'm sure we all know that we've got a few issues around the Napaian Ward. I'm from Sorento, so I think Sorento is where my initial focus was. I noticed that there were things that weren't quite right. And when I looked further, then I could see that these same, same things were happening throughout the whole ward. I moved down here permanently, myself about, I've been here for years, probably about five years. Then the rest of the family came down here about three and a half years ago. Before that, we had a holiday house here for 12 years and we've really helped.
Just interrupt, sorry, someone, people have got their mics on and I can hear their TV in the background and people washing the dishes. Sorry, Susan.
The budget's on.
This is more important.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Correct. Right, go Susan.
I'm not political in any way. I don't like politics. I really don't like politicians that much. I am from the construction industry and I just like to do practical and tangible things. There's a few things that I noticed around here that, that sort of didn't sit well with me. I noticed the state of our infrastructure and we've got a lot of stuff here that has just been left to rot. And I think it has been, a lot of, a lot of the problem is that when we were sort of absorbed by the Mornington Peninsula Shire Council, when we were the Flinders Ward, like I wasn't living here then, it was 25 years ago. But it seems that everything, if you look at all the infrastructure around this Sorento ports and all that, it looks like it's all about 25 years old, you know, it's sort of stuff that hasn't been upgraded, that hasn't been maintained. Got old fences here and there, we've got bits of barbed wire, things that really shouldn't be there. And so it hasn't been good, but there are things that, that I think as a councillor that I could perhaps improve would be the infrastructure and maintenance, footpaths, bike lanes, roads, all that stuff, sporting venues, beaches, shopping areas, inclusive beach access. It's not hard. If it's cleverly designed, it doesn't have to look like an add-on or anything like that. It can be very beautiful and an actual asset. A lot of people think of inclusivity as, you know, like a ramp with a stainless steel handrail near it. Yeah, that leads to a beach mat. It doesn't have to be that at all. It can be quite stunningly beautiful and I'm sure that that can be done. And we need to future-proof our areas to make sure that like, that they're still going to be here in a, in the generations to come. We can't just have a situation where everything seems to fall apart at once. And then you've got a problem where somebody steps in and says, right, we've got to fix this. And it usually involves a lot of excavation, a lot of concrete, and there's no coming back from that. Now, protecting our environment and wildlife, that's another one of my issues. I think that it should be a priority for, for everyone, but not at the expense of the citizens themselves, like the residents themselves. I think that we should find that balance between the two and really work to, to sort of achieve it. And when I say the residents.
One minute to go.
One minute to go. Oh, I've been talking. Okay. When I say the residents and the, and the environment, I mean just making sure that what we do doesn't impact the, the environment too much. Rebuilding businesses is huge, supporting the community, got a tonne of ideas on that through community groups, everything like that. Overseeing council projects in our ward, I mean, construction, I'm all over this. Improving council, council budgets. I was sick to the stomach when I saw the current council budget and that has to be amended. And also pushing waste initiatives. These are just the things on my fly, but pushing waste initiatives. There's, there's a lot that has to be done. I've put through proposals for a waste energy plant and stuff like that, which is, which I think is really important and needs to, needs to be focused on. Did I make any time?
You have. Thank you. Now, we'll have a, have a minute. So questions will come at the end of the session after everybody's spoken. So if you've got specific questions you would like to ask for Susan, just make a quick note of them now. And I'll give you 30 seconds to do that and then I'll ask Michelle to commence speaking. So thanks, Susan. Okay, Michelle, over to you. And the same, the same question applies. What matters to you and why have you decided to nominate?
Well, first, first if I start off, I'll just sort of say that many of you may know me through the volunteer groups that I belong to and the positions I have and still hold within the community group. I'm a past vice president of the Sorento Community Centre and as well as the Napaian Conservative Group. Currently, I chair the Right Community Group Alliance and we're just very successful in obtaining infrastructure funding in Karrar. I also belong to the Prince of Pointe National Park. I chair my council advisory committee. Strongly about equity inclusiveness. I'm also a member of council's disability advisory committee. In order to improve infrastructure and conserve our natural environment and coastal lifestyle, I've been a very active community advocate. I believe as a councillor, I will be even more effective if I was in a position to influence council decision-making, picking the key areas of strategic planning and policy development as it relates to community services, planning and development, the natural environment and social justice and equity. It is not always easy to see oneself as others. And at one point, to answer a question asked of candidates by the electoral commission, I interned asked a wide cross-section of people what attributes they believe I possessed that would make me a good councillor. Some of the feedback I received said, a team player and effective leader with a good sense of humour, local knowledge and experience in community advocacy, is ethical, knowledgeable, committed, not easily intimidated and determined to get results. Consultation is inherent to what I do as a community advocate. I believe community consultation is a mandatory act of a councillor. There'll be a significant economic and social fallout due to COVID as balancing the resources needed to bring the Shire back to economic prosperity without cutting current infrastructure projects and community services. We are rapidly losing our coastal town ambience. I look at horror at what has happened with inappropriate residential development. For instance, at the Sorento end of Melbourne Road and the new commercial building in Rye, there is nothing in the design of these buildings that reflects the coastal character of either town. The Mornington Peninsula Planning Scheme, I believe, is failing us. The heritage villages like Sorento can be, can't be protected from inappropriate development. Developers moving into Rye and no doubt in time will set their sights on Blair, Garriant, Tukwuk. As a result, the natural environment is being decimated with blocks once full of indigenous vegetation stripped bare. I would advocate that Mornington Peninsula Planning Framework and decision-making to be separate from that upgrade of Melbourne. Unless we have total autonomy over the planning decision, we will end up suburbs of Melbourne. I would like to see a specific budget line for the implementation of township plans. The Sorento Master Plan, for instance, has no funding for implementation. We had to lobby on hard to get funding to get the inclusion model in the right township plan. I would also like to see township plans for Blair, Garriant, Tukwuk. I feel very strongly about social justice and equity. And I'm currently a member, as mentioned previously, of council's disability advisory committee. I sought their advice about the style of all abilities picnic furniture now being rolled out on rifle tree. And hopefully this will set a precedent across the Shire. I'm aware of the stress and poverty in parts of our townships compounded by the COVID pandemic and the lack of.
One minute to go, Michelle.
And the lack of opportunities for youth. I discovered today when talking to a young woman that there is a huge gap in mental health services for those aged between 25 and 30. Finally, my vision for the Napaian Ward over the next four years is post-COVID, a return to prosperous and healthy communities. Community voices acted on with residents, councillors and officers actually working in partnership. Peninsula Planning Regulations, independent of the Melbourne Planning Scheme, a climate emergency plan implemented to conserve our biodiversity, coastal and hinterland environments. Less spent on consultants but more on community services. More all ability public spaces and increased awareness of indigenous cultural heritage. So thank you for taking the time to listen and just remember, vote one, Michelle Cheers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Same again. We'll have a 30 second break. In case you have specific questions you want to make a note of that, that you can address to Michelle later on. And in, at the end of that period of time, Mark, it'll be over to you.
Terrific, Shane.
I'll give you, give you a wave in a sec.
Thank you. How's the sound, Shane?
Yours is good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mark, whenever you're ready.
Terrific. Thank you. Same questions, Shane, yes?
Yeah, exactly the same. Why, what matters to you and why have you chosen to nominate to become a councillor, a Mornington Peninsula councillor?
All right. Thank you, Shane. Shane, look, I've been involved in the community for over 25 years. I've been a rate payer for, for that period. Some, some may know me already as being connected with the Sorento Porty RSL. I've been a member there for 30 years. I, most recently as part of the new committee, was invited on board as the vice president. I've been working with, with the community. It's very much a community-based club based around volunteers. And I believe I've, I've been able to gain a, a good perspective on the community, what the community needs and the frustrations of the community. About five years ago, I was seconded on to the Mornington Peninsula Beach Box Association, again as a committee member. In that period of time, I moved into secretary, vice president, and I now am the president of the Beach Box Association. That covers over 1300 boxes from Mount Eliza to Porty. Why is that important? It's given me a really good breadth and understanding of our community. That's, that's quite a good sample of the community from all perspectives. There's people there that have inherited boxes and those that have been fortunate enough to purchase boxes. And what we've experienced there is how the council communicates with society. And one of the big things is obvious to me is it's as though the community serves the council. I believe the council should serve the community. With the current changes, there's 11 councillors, six of those have decided not to stand this election. I believe it's a great opportunity to bring in a breath of fresh air. Possibly be more than six new councillors going forward. And it's, it's an incredible time we're going through at the moment. COVID-19 is really recasting the whole, the whole plan and the future of how this council operates. We've seen in the past four plus years difficulties that the council has had managing its expenses. There's been a lot of waste. We've seen the naming of the aquatic centre, the costs associated with that. I believe those costs could be saved, legal costs, VCAT costs, and they could be redistributed back into the community, whether that's for environment, whether it's for recreation facilities. COVID has, I guess, reinforced the beauty of our environment down here. Everybody appears to enjoy walking, but not everyone can walk because the paths aren't capable or suitable. There, there are areas that we can reinvest in. Walking the, our shopping strips, there are a number of businesses that have closed and won't come back. That's quite a pity, not only for the business, but the revenue it generates for the council. I, I think going forward, the council is going to really struggle with its revenue budget. You know, just shorthand, it could be 20, 30% less in revenue. So managing that budget going forward is really important. I have a strong corporate background. I've been involved with international businesses right through to startup businesses. So moving forward, I think there's big challenges there. We need to reinvest in the community and use the, the rate payers' funds to appropriately invest in the community. Now, that could be assisting small business. We're seeing a lot of policies coming out of council. But when I talk to small business, they don't consult with the businesses. So what opportunity is there with those policies to work when the businesses aren't being listened to or even given that attention? A lot of them are saying the policies won't work, that they're ill-conceived and so forth. The importance of small business, they are an employer here. So across the country, small business is the biggest employer of all employers. So we need to invest in that. We need to bring the vitality back to our shopping strips and create a better atmosphere.
One minute to go, Mark.
Thank you. So my, my, my key objective, and it's been mentioned already, is how this economy is going to struggle going forward. So right, right down to the, the average homeowner, their ability to pay rates and fees going forward is going to be challenged. How do we, how do we meet that? How do we meet their needs? It's going to be important that we are sympathetic to their needs. We don't charge them interest, but perhaps we give them a reduction or even give them an extended holiday to pay those fees. Reinvesting into recreation facilities, in Sorento particularly, the netball courts there. There's no cricket nets for, for children or adults to, to be able to exercise. Just diversing some of those investments. So we reinvest into the people that are more important. So going forward, I believe I have the skills to contribute to the new council and please vote for me when the opportunity arises.
Thank you, Mark. We'll go through the same procedure. If you, if you feel you, you've got some questions that you'd like to ask, Mark, jot them down or memorise them. And in just a few moments, Hugh, I'll ask you to commence.
Thank you.
Might be a sec. Won't be long. Okay, whenever you're ready, Hugh.
Okay.
Same two questions.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Shane, for the introduction and good evening, everyone. And good evening especially to the viewers. And I'd like to initially thank Shane and Heather for, and the others at the Sorento Community Centre for putting together this forum. These are indeed difficult times as we struggle with this technology and maintaining some sense of community. And I think to have this forum in this way is, is a great indication that community is still alive and well. So I'm offering myself at this election as an independent candidate for the Pion Ward. I'm independent of all political parties, factions, township and lobby groups and associations. And I'm completely self-funding my reelection campaign. So as an independent councillor, what's really important to me at this time is actually working hard for the community in this COVID emergency. And it's presenting enormous difficulties for the community and its social interreaction with people. We had a conference session tonight with the CEO where the word suicide was being mentioned. There are instances of this occurring. There are instances of severe depression occurring, particularly amongst our older age group in the community, which is actually particularly prevalent on the southern peninsula and in particular this ward itself. So I think council needs to respond very sensitively and very effectively to deal with the inevitable COVID fallout that's going to occur, particularly the financial fallout. And I engage on a monthly basis with the community in a coalition group that I chair. It's a monthly coalition group and I meet rate payers as and when I can in the particular circumstances of the COVID emergency. But before that, I would meet on a, on a weekly basis by appointment with any rate payers. But working hard for the community has met over the last four years, getting in much-needed capital resources for the ward itself. And I, I refer to the 6.5 million that's been brought in to rejuvenate Rye. That's been six years of hard work to get that money. And it was something, a project that I initiated very early on when I first came on council as it needed a desperate capital injection. That's now being achieved and that's now going to be delivered in Rye. Similarly, with the Rye Ferry Terminal, 5 million has been got in for the Sorento Ferry Terminal. There's money earmarked for Sorento car parking. And there's a whole range of other monies that have been attracted, not forgetting Tootgarook itself with the Wilkinson and Carmile Strick drainage and the Romney Park Playground and the renovation of the park there. So all this is money that's come into the ward as a result of much hard work by the councillors, including myself, and working with the officers, because the only way we're going to get really good capital works results with the officers is actually to work with them. So going forward, we, we actually have some, some serious issues as to how to keep our residents COVID safe in the present circumstances and to help our businesses restart. And this, of course, there's a tension between those two propositions. But I think at a very basic level, we're offering hardship rates and fees relief and we're expanding our outdoor cafe dining. I would work to expand farm gate sales, not just simply with the farms and adjoining properties, but to enable all Mornington Peninsula produce to be able to be marketed from the farm gate. We have to keep up council spending. It's essential we keep money flowing into the community. And unfortunately, the government has shut us down in relation to that. It's starting to ease up a little bit now, but for nearly two to three months, there's been a shutdown in capital spending largely because of the government's lockdown. We've got climate change major issues which we actually have to deal with. There's the AGL at Crypt Point, which council said no to. We need to find alternatives to landfill at Rye and the Hillview Quarry needs to be addressed. And we've also got problems with the planning scheme because the officers wish to simplify it and I'm not sure that that simplification is going to be in the interests of all the rate payers. So there's much to be done and I would be very pleased for you to reelect me, to continue to represent you. I think continuity at this time with so many councillors retiring is very important. I know how the council works. I know how the CEO works. And together, working with the community, we can go forward to make this ward even better.
Thank you, Hugh, very much. Once again, we'll go through the same process. If anyone wants to save up a question to ask of Hugh, please jot it down or, as I said, memorise it and we'll go from there. Now, Heather, I can't find Simon on the screen.
No, Simon has not arrived yet. We've just had two new people arrive, Rob and Jill, but not Simon.
Right. Okay. Okey-doke. Well, Gary, that thrust you into the, into the limelight, five minutes early. So if you'd be so kind as to share with us the issues that matter to you and why they, why you've chosen to be a councillor. And could someone please turn the channel off?
Am I working now?
Yes. You're away, Gary.
Don't really know everybody there, so I'll just introduce myself as, as, as a true local, lifetime local. Came down here in 55, I was at the age two with my parents. Attended all the local school, Cubs, sports, et cetera. Went to Rosebud High, went from there to Monash, got a degree and taught. And I ended up coming back here to Rosebud High at the time, which was a strange thing. And, and that's been my life ever since, apart from when I retired. And after I retired, I, I rested a bit, visited lots of people, read a lot. And then I became interested in local issues and through my uncle, the, I met at the first shop with, with the Historical Society and joined them. And they had a heritage and planning committee, which, which was involved in assessing different, different issues around the town and expressing opinions and writing objections and, and all that. That, I also volunteered at the community centre for six years. And that was quite enjoyable, met a lot of people there and saw how it worked. My concerns about the local Shire, the ward in particular, are planning issues, which a couple of the, the other candidates have mentioned, getting ourselves out of the, the metropolitan type of style of, of planning. I think the planning scheme needs to be improved. It's very slow working with the state who control that. We can improve the character, the maintaining, the historical nature of Sorento, what's left of it. And, and also retain a little bit more of the natural environment by, by encouraging smaller, smaller houses on appropriate blocks. I'm concerned about small, lots of small things around town, which have just been let go. The most outstanding one for me is I walk to the shopping centre whenever I need shops, whenever I need goods. And there are a number of heavily, heavily worn paths leading to the shopping centre which could, could be well improved by, by being sealed. I think that's been a little bit overlooked in the past for more grandiose types of capital developments. The beach side, the Bay Beach side, which the Shire controls and Parks controls the ocean. So the, the Bay, the Bay Beach could, it needs a lot of attention regarding maintenance and just tidying up, I think. I wouldn't wish to change the relaxed character, the informal character of the beach, because you go down there to relax and, and not feel like you're being surrounded by a whole lot of suburban types of structures. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the level of consultation. I've been involved with local groups. I've been also involved in, in Hugh's coalition group meetings. I've got to know a lot of people in relation to the local groups. I also think it's important to consult with the interested person who, or rate payer or even just a resident who's not paying rates about what they are concerned about as well as those, as those groups. And of course, that includes sporting, social groups, the whole, the whole gamut. Let me, now as far as consultation goes.
Last, last minute, Gary.
I think it's important to consult with other councillors as well as the, the show, the officers involved in different projects. the officers involved in different projects to achieve the best outcomes. I think we could do a lot to cut expenditure and maximise the amenity that is netted by the spending that we have. We need more traffic flow during peak periods. I think things could be redirected to make that a little smoother through the township of Sorrento. Parking is obviously an issue, perhaps temporary areas could be opened up for parking and people could be directed in that direction.
That's it, time's up, Gary. One more sentence.
Oh, thanks for listening, Terry. That's it, that'll do.
Good on you. Thank you, Gary, very much.
Excuse me one second. I've spoken to Simon on the phone and he's logging in.
I'm in.
Yeah, he's already logged, he's already logged. Oh, hi, Simon. Head the SMS message. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
We'll be with you in one moment, Simon. We'll slot you straight into the list. But as we've done previously, we'll just take a minute so people can assess anything they, consider anything they'd like to ask of Gary when we have question time a little later. So give us about 30 seconds, Simon, and I'll chat to you and get you rolling. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, allow me, please, to introduce Simon Mulbany, who is also a candidate for the election. And Simon, over to you. We're interested in hearing why you chose to nominate and what matters to you in relation to the Napier Ward.
Good evening, everyone. And I decided to run on the back of last year's terrible incident that nearly occurred or occurred in a few streets. And that was the spraying programme that they brought in to try to experiment on our population to whether it would reduce the number of virulosis. And it's to, so someone knows me a bit deeper. I started Save the Bees Australia here in 2013. So I'm a beekeeper. And in that time, I've gone and met a lot of people in the community in regards to rehoming bees that would have otherwise been exterminated. So I am a, I guess, a semi-commercial beekeeper in the area. And all the hard work I would have done over the last, you know, since 2013 would have been undone, plus I think there would have been permanent damage. But I was really uplifted by how the community galvanised. And there were so many different groups that came together at that time. And in unison, we were able to, you know, let wisdom prevail and we stopped it from happening. But that made me realise that I have a role to play in galvanising the community on certain issues. And so I think now with the tragedy that we're facing this year, that's really what the whole Shire have to do. And we really have to help out, particularly for me, I've personally been touched. My son hasn't been able to play football this year. My son Oscar's 11 and goes to Sorrento Primary. And so I've a lot to do with the footy and cricket club down there. And so I realise how important it is for the future of the area to help those, get the kids off the gadgets and get them out playing sport. Another thing that really touched me this year was I was really frustrated that when spider crabs were doing their, you know, marvellous, I'm a snorkeler too, marvellous march under the pier, that there were hundreds of people trying to catch them. I used the platform Save the Bees Australia to share that petition and I think I got an extra 10,000 or something signatures on that one. But I'll be very much and trying to get a close season on the spider crabs. I don't think they're any good to eat anyway, so I'm a bit disturbed that people are doing that to them and it became a thing. In saying that, you know, I think they're definitely something to celebrate. So I'm more in, I'm very much, you know, a fan of the idea to invite, you know, to make something off the marvellous event. Another area that is very scary for me to watch is the erosion. And so I was just sharing an image, I think, of 20 years before in front of Porcy pub and to now. And something has to be done in regards to the whole Porcy area losing the beaches there. But I also walk a hell of a lot down the beaches at Blagary. And there was a coastal beard heath I saw the other day falling into the water and that tree must be 100 years old. For me, I'm in sort of no doubt that the dredging had something to do with all that erosion. So I'm very much trying to do something proactive in regards to the erosion too. I feel blessed that I have been part of this campaign because now I'm introduced to groups like yours. I already had a relationship with the Men's Shed, but now I'm also talking to foreshore committees and stuff. And I'm very much, whether I get in or not, offering my platform, which, you know, has 100,000 readers now, to get issues that we face here on the front of everyone's mind. So feel free.
Just under a minute, just under a minute to go, Simon.
Yep, thanks. So I'm very much, I think another asset for me is that I can look at things from a broad perspective and I think I'd be very good at fighting for the needs of the Napier Ward in response to, you know, collaborating with all the other councillors, because I realise there's a lot of collaboration needed. There's another small issue I'd like to change. I do a lot of walking here and my kids play in the park and I do not like the chemical Roundup being used in parklands and on walkways. And I'll be very much keen to look for alternatives and I'm very much aware that there are alternatives like steaming and slasher and I'm dealing with councils that are doing those alternatives already. Thanks a lot.
One more sentence?
Thanks.
Thanks, Simon, very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will move on to question time, which, with an audience of this size and with the screens set up the way they are.
Shane, we've got to have Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, sorry, Sarah. How could I forget? We're not going to have question time, yet.
Lipi on and everything, Shane.
Oh, Sarah, I'm so sorry. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, last but not least, Sarah Race.
Thanks, Shane. First of all, thanks for, Shane and Heather, for hosting this evening. I'd also like to acknowledge that we're meeting tonight on Bunroong Land and I'd like to pay my respects to the elders, past, present and emerging. So I'm going to start off with why I'm standing for council, because I think that's very important and that'll lead into my passions. I think that'll go quite nicely. So first of all, I moved down to Tuk Garook almost six years ago now and it was with my husband and my two children and it was with the plan to give my children a better life, you know, bring them up in the most beautiful place in the world. I was lucky enough to spend all my summer holidays at Blagary, at my grandparents' beach house, and that was amazing. So that was phenomenal. So since I moved down to Tuk Garook, I've had the, I've kind of jumped into community life. So I've been on fundraising team at Rye Preschool, on the Rye School Council. I was lucky enough to work at Rye Community House and I was also on the board there for a while. And then through Rye Community House, I've had the privilege of working with a number of community groups, including the Rye Lions, Rosebud and Rye Roadtree, Poitnham Heem Men's Shed, Blagary Community Gardens, just to name a few. There's a whole host of others. So I really enjoyed that aspect of being down here and getting to know a lot of people. And it's been, yeah, a real privilege. I also think I can bring a lot of different experiences to this role. I've lived in the UK for almost 11 years and over there I had lots of wonderful travelling experiences that obviously build resilience. But I also worked in the e-commerce industry, in startups and also in big multinationals as well, which is great for budgeting and all sorts of innovations as well. When we arrived back in Australia, I actually worked, ended up living in Arras. I volunteered at the Visitor Information Centre and ended up working, managing the Visitor Information Centre and the Gum San Chinese Heritage Centre. So that actually was my first entree into local government and that was, that was great. I had a great time. I managed over 30 volunteers who were brilliant when my daughter Nellie was born. I had all sorts of cakes and little booties and stuff issued for me. But it was really interesting. So I've got an inside view of what local government is like, which I found enormous, it was enormous privilege as well to work there. So back here, when at Rye, at Rye Community House, when I was working, I was the Grants and Fundraising Officer. So that meant that I've now got a really good working relationship with not only our local council, I know quite a few council officers, but I've also got a really good working relationship with our state and federal MPs, which I think will be a big bonus coming into this position. So also, my third reason why I wanted to stand is I don't want to be the person on the sideline carping in and throwing bombs at the council without actually getting in and doing the hard work and representing our community. I don't, I don't really like that. If I'm going to complain about something, I want to be able to get in there and do something about it. So that's my third reason for standing. So on my website, I said that the five things I was looking to, my priorities are the priorities I've worked on, Team Napier. Now, that is working, I've come to that conclusion, I'm calling it Team Napier because I think, believe we've got everyone and everything here we need to meet the challenges. I think we've all touched on this fact tonight that it's not going to be politics as usual. This pandemic's thrown a big bomb into our lives and we've got to try and figure out how to pick up the pieces afterwards. And I guess we don't really know what that is yet. I think it's called the known unknowns that are ahead of us. So I think we need innovation, we need great ideas and we need great fiscal management as well, which are things that I can bring to the table. But I also want to be there in championing and advocating for the people that are already here with great ideas and great passion for this community. I'm standing on a platform of integrity and openness. I think that's really important in your councillor. You should believe what they say and you should be able to have frank discussions and they should be able to be open to criticism. I'm standing on for local issues. I've spoken to a lot of people before I even decided to stand and they were things like, I think you've all mentioned them tonight, infrastructure, people really want their footpaths fixed, they want more bike paths, they want their sporting clubs, they want, yeah, sorry, I'm starting again, they want infrastructure for their sporting clubs.
One minute.
Yeah.
One minute to go.
Oh, okay, I better round up then. Look, I'm standing tonight, I'm standing for the community. I'm really excited to be able to advocate for the community on all the sorts of issues, so the spider crabs, infrastructure, dogs, lots of people really would like a year-round dog beach. Youth, youth would love a youth council, a youth representation to council, they'd love their voice to be heard. And I'm looking at planning, people really want to be heard. They want them to be communicated to better and they want, oh, so many things, better public transport. So I'm standing as an advocate for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. I now get to recap and as I jumped in before, before I left Sarah off the list, it'll be a little bit difficult as we seek to scan the screen for your questions. We'll do our best to address your questions in order as you raise them. Depending on which piece of equipment you're using Skype on, there are various means by which you can identify yourself as needing a question or wanting to ask a question. If you don't, hang on. I'm having trouble myself. So you can either turn your microphone on and put your hand up. If you're familiar with, if you're using an iPad, for example, there is a signal you can, which is a hand in the air, but we'll work through it and we'll get there. If... So we'll scan, as I said, yes, Heather?
It looks like Janet's got the first question.
Okay, I'll be with Janet in just a moment. We ask you to identify yourself and then identify which of our candidates your question is being addressed to. So Janet, over to you.
Thank you, Shane. My name's Janet Street. I'm actually running in the Brys Ward as a candidate. So I was very interested in hearing other candidates from another ward and their perspectives on certain things. My question is to Susan. Susan, you mentioned that you were sickened in the stomach about the budget. I'm just wondering what caused you to become sick by viewing the budget?
Just looking at the gross mismanagement of funds, you know, there was so much in there that was, it was just, to me, it was just shocking. There was more money allowed for roadside vegetation than roads, bike paths and footpaths combined. Eight million dollars for consultants when they've got nearly 700 people working at the council. There's a whole host of issues, $140,000 for council and meals. I just don't understand it. Everyone's doing it tough, everyone needs to see that we're all pulling together. And then you go through the budget, I can't even, seriously, I don't even want to look at it anymore. You go through it and there's so many areas that could be trimmed back. Services increased and money spent there, but so much unnecessary work, a million dollars on office maintenance, it's just, it just doesn't seem right to me.
Thank you. I do have one more question, but I can answer that, ask that after other people have asked a question.
While you've got the floor, Janet, keep going.
Okay. The other question is, well, I've got several questions, but I'll ask one more. What do you see as the main social justice issues that the Mornington Peninsula Shire as a whole is facing? And what do you feel that the council itself needs or could do to address?
What exactly do you mean by social justice? Is there one particular one that you're not, that you're addressing or?
No, I'm asking each candidate. You may or may not be aware, but what are the social justice issues that you feel that the Mornington Peninsula Shire Council is facing? And what, if anything, do you feel that the council could do to address those issues?
I'm, like, I know that social justice is a really big thing. I'm not exactly familiar with what you mean in this respect. When you talk about social justice, I usually think it's something to do with inequality. Is that what you mean?
Well, it could mean anything to you, but to me, it may mean something else. So social justice is inequality within society, it could be.
That's it. I just wanted to know which part of it that you, well, inequality, there's a lot that we can sort of do. I think a lot of it is all about community programmes and also events. It sort of brings people together and it doesn't discern between people. It sort of makes it much more, you know, when you go on holidays and you're in a caravan park or something like that, and it doesn't matter if you've got a guy next to you who's worth a billion dollars and you've got someone who's worth like $25, it's all equal and I really like that. And I think a lot of community events level the playing field out and just make it so comfortable. I know a lot of people down here from various walks of life and it's, I always find it, you know, walking on the beach, for example, it's a very levelling experience and I think that's a really good thing. I think that the council could also pay attention to issues that are affecting those in our community that are suffering more than others. I think that there should be some more programmes put in place, but not just the progress, but also the accessibility. Sometimes a lot of people won't reach out because they feel that it's a little bit, a little bit too hard to do and a little bit too confronting.
Okay, Sarah, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think homelessness is one of the social justice issues I would like to tackle if I got elected as a councillor. I know Sam Hearn's done a lot of great work in that area already, but I as a councillor. I know Sam Hearn's done a lot of great work in that area already, but I think we'll increasingly, we'll see increasing rises in homeland homelessness. And I don't just mean people that may not get to camp on the foreshore. It'd be people that are just end up, um, possibly just couch surfing for a while. And I think that needs to have, even though, um, people might say it's a state government issue, I don't think that, um, we should look away at people experiencing problems, um, in our community. So I'd really like to make it a, um, a, a three-tiered level of government response to see what we can come up with. Um, I do know the, um, some of the people that are working in this area think that local government, um, is possibly one of the most underutilized areas. The, um, this, this sort of, um, social justice issue. So I'd really like to see what, um, what I could do if I was elected as councillor in that space.
Thank you. Michelle? Your next mark.
I think there's, there's a range of social justice issues, which I, which I think, to be fair to council, I think they're trying to address to with limited funds. I mean, probably one of the main issues for me, if I was a councillor, would be, would be looking at, um, people with a physical disability and the barriers that they face with accessing public spaces. Um, I think there's, there's youth who are transgender. There's homelessness, as Sarah mentioned. I, I think that there's, I mean, we're as diverse as a small community as, as larger communities. So it is about, you know, addressing the needs of, of people and recognizing that they have a valid place in society and not made to feel as over the minority groups or groups that really haven't got a voice.
Sorry, Michelle, it's really difficult to hear you.
Actually, it's part of my microphone system. I can't, I can't do anything about it. But one, basically what I'm saying is, is there are a number of, of groups, minority groups, livings across the Shire that and, and people with disabilities. Anyone read the report that came out about the experience of people with both mental and physical disabilities during COVID? You would, you would actually be sick because of this, the way people like that have just fallen through, through the cracks and.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Shane. Look, as an extension of, uh, Sarah and Michelle, Janet, I think it's a real growing issue even now. Um, no matter if you're in Rosebud, um, Toogarook, Rye, Blair Gary. I, I'm a big walker and, um, late, late in the evening, early in the morning, there's transient cars on our foreshore where people are living out of cars. Um, and that's as it stands at the moment. I don't see that improving over the next couple of years as this economic impact, uh, starts to, starts to take its presence and we, uh, it takes hold. Uh, we need to reach out to them. We need to give them, um, personal pride and a bit, bit of self, self-actualization. And, um, whether that's being assisting them with, um, with employment or assisting with, um, with self-worth, uh, I think it's going to be a growing issue. And it's one of the big ones for council. That, um, it's not just a policy, but it's actual engagement with these people and, um, it's mental health. It's all those factors that are very prevalent in our society.
Thank you. Gary?
Um, yeah, I was approached about this issue, um, since I, I announced my candidacy. I've, I've had two or three people, um, I've chatted with two or three people. One of them was on Shelley Beach and said that, uh, there are homeless people camping down there too and leaving lots of rubbish, causing a fire hazard. Um, and I was aware personally within the Soretto Township, uh, a couple of, uh, homeless, homeless people. Um, I, it's, it's obviously a problem in, uh, in Rosebud with the, the beach camping. I've walked there many times. Um, I know I'm connected with the, with the church. I, I do the books for the Rye and his, uh, Andy's op shop. And, uh, and I got in touch with them about it and, and they, they explained to me that, well, I think it was what Sarah said, that there needs to be a three-tiered approach to it from, from Commonwealth state and, um, and, um, of course, local, local council, because local council has them on the ground, obviously, there, there'd be the touch, touch point for it. It occurred to me that, uh, the council has a lot of drainage reserves or drainage blocks around the place, which, some of which have been sold. And, um, I just wonder whether it'd be possible to utilize those with, um, with small portable, uh, housing units, um, to give these people some, some relief. I know the Anglican, um, care group do a lot of work in that, in that regard. And most of the op shops will, um, will, will provide blankets and, and clothes and things like that for the, for the homeless. So, um, yes, we need to look into it more carefully and, uh, be more active in it.
Thank you, Gary. Hugh and Simon, did you want to comment or are you, you're satisfied with what's happened so far?
I'm, I'm happy to comment. Um, thank you in relation to this. Look, there are really four issues in relation to social justice. The first is social housing. The second is homeless. Third is gaming machines and fourth is disabilities. As to social housing, um, that is actually providing proper houses for families, for people that, that have significant disadvantages attached to them. Now, there's, there's any amount of private capital and charities capital out there available to provide social housing, but it requires land and it requires land near facilities. And there's not much point in having land in a place where people who live in social housing can't access services, can't access shops. So that's the big stumbling block is finding land near the relevant services. Council has land. It's a question of unlocking that land and it's a question of getting the offices to come clean, disclose where that land is. But a lot of work's been done in a policy, um, framework with this. There's the AAA Housing Committee, which deals with social housing. And if we can find the land, the capital is there to build. The second issue is homeless, um, and this is a profound issue. Uh, and last year we did a lot of work in Rye with, um, with Peninsula Hot Springs. Um, getting in touch with people who are in boarding houses and other circumstances. And through the good graces of Peninsula Springs, we were able to offer a, a weekly access to the facilities, a meal and use of the facilities there. And so that was extraordinarily successful, but our mayor, Sam Hearn, did a lot of work in relation to this and it absolutely reached a locked door because government regulations prohibit the use of public buildings for, um, the use of homeless in these circumstances. So I came up with a suggestion. There are three cottages down at Please Point for, for respite care. They're lying empty. They've been empty for the last six months. I raised this with my fellow councillors. I raised it with management, couldn't get a, couldn't get any movement out of them at all about it. I was profoundly disappointed. These are large houses that are available and could take families on an interim basis there and deal with our homeless. So they're lying there unused. It's, it's, it's a terrible shame. The third thing is gaming machines. And I think in relation to gaming machines, we do need an absolutely crystal clear policy that council will not allow on council property, uh, on any of our leases of our committees of management and those areas for which we have responsibility. Council should not, when we are leasing and licensing these areas, permit gaming machines. And if they're there already, there needs to be a program for reduction. Um, the fourth element was disabilities. Um, and there's a lot of work being done by council in relation to disabilities, which has been, um, absolutely terrific. There are difficulties. We had difficulties with getting the wheelchairs out onto the beach and so forth. And, and Terry knows all about that particular issue, the, the difficulties finding community groups and finding sufficient insurance to do that. But just on a simple matter with disabilities, the picnic tables. Um, the picnic tables can be easily accommodated by having flanges at each end to them. Those picnic tables are going down in at Rye, but look at what's happening in the Cameron's Bite, um, to White Cliffs Committee of Management. They're recently redoing the car park down at the end of Flinders Street. And they've put in new picnic tables. It's been wonderfully laid out and all the rest of it. And the picnic table's been put in at the wrong angle. So the end of the picnic table has a bollard there. So someone in a wheelchair can't use it. It was the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. So, um, these are all the difficulties that are encountered on a day-to-day basis. But they're the four big social justice issues that I see and which there is creeping incremental improvements which can be accelerated.
Thank you, Hugh. Simon, did you want to comment? Microphone on. Turn your microphone on.
Have you got me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'll, I'll just make a quick comment. I, I, um, agree with, um, everything else. Everyone else is sad. Um, but I think one debilitating thing I have noticed down here is loneliness. And there are a, a lot of people in our community that are suffering that we, we might not really know that they're suffering. And I just wanted to help with this, to help people be able to reach out. And there's a lot of, um, great groups that are already existing down here, like the men's shed, that can probably stop people in our community, community stumbling down into a place where they, they have to be helped out. And so, um, I, I'd love to be able to work with existing clubs to, um, to, to stop those that are potentially going to be disadvantaged.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a comment to all of that. That's great for everyone's, um, response to that question. One of the highest, uh, rates of domestic violence occurs on the, um, Mornington Peninsula. And no one highlighted that issue.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now, Gary, did you just want to add another?
I just wanted to, two words, disaffected youth, that to be considered on. Yes.
Good on you. Okay. Thank you. I'm scanning the screen.
Um, Shane, in the chat, there's a question to Sarah. Can you explain how you are helping enhance and protect our regional identity, natural places and local food production?
I did, I did just answer that. Can I read my answer? I just said that we live in such a beautiful, diverse and unique part of Victoria. I mean, it's just gorgeous, isn't it? We, you know, it's what I call, you know, it's God's country. Um, so we're lucky. We're, we've got the bay, the beaches and food production all in one. So, um, I recognize that they contribute to the whole identity of where we live. And I'm committed to maintaining the connections between people, food and nature to support regional tourism jobs. I think it's really important and I think a lot of people are asking, and a lot of people, and I'm sure a lot of the other candidates will be getting questions about the green wedge and your opinion on the green wedge. And I think, um, we all know it's an iconic part of the Mornington Peninsula and something that we probably all, um, you know, hold dear to ourselves. So I definitely, um, think that the green wedge, the bay and the back beaches are all part of what makes the Mornington Peninsula special. And it's definitely something that we need to protect and look after.
Thanks, Sarah.
And then another one in the chat. At what point are the candidates going to properly address the damage that the dredging has caused to the bay? And how the foreshore at Portsea Front Beach as it is now stands is a complete disgrace. Sandbags for another ten years is not acceptable. We need a permanent fix.
Gary?
Um, I was approached by, about that issue myself. And, um, some time ago, the state proposed to put a, a solid stone wall there. Um, there is argument about whether changing the, um, changing the, the base of the, um, the, the sea there somewhere can mitigate the, the wave intensity and, and reduce the sand and perhaps it'll come back. Another suggestion that I'm aware of is, uh, is forming a, an open sea, um, pool there between the, the baths maybe somewhere and, uh, up toward the hotel.
Okay.
That would provide a, a, a sea wall. It provides, um, the amenity of being able to swim. Um, and the real question is whether anything can be done to reclaim the beach or whether we should just accept the fact that it's gone and do something constructive with the area to, to bring back some, some positive, um, use for, for the community.
Okay. Now, Rhonda's got a question. Uh, Hugh, Mark?
I was just going to comment in, I was just going to comment in relation to the Portsea Beach, um, to follow on from that. Um, look, the government have a very detailed report about the Portsea Beach. And that report demonstrates that there is a significant amount of additional energy coming in, into the bay through the heads. Um, and that energy is finding its way, reflecting off the channel and the, the sand configuration there. And there is a plume of energy which dissipates right square in front of where the sandbag wall is, which is the cause of the erosion. The government know what the solution is, and that is to build what's called a, an offshore configuration, which is a deep water trench. And by creating a deep body of water, it will reflect the energy away from the beach. That is the solution. The government will not implement it. The government will do nothing about it. We recently had a, a, a cheaper option put up, which was to build a stone groin at Point Franklin, which would retain the sand from finding its way around the corner to Shelley's Beach and Point King. The government refused to consider it. We got a letter back from the government of about five to six pages long, saying, these are all the hurdles you have to jump over. The government will not approve it. They will not engage with council. The minister has said that she would engage, Lily Dambroso said she would engage with council to find a solution. Instead, they built a sandbag wall and they've now walked away from it for the next ten years. It's a political issue with this government and it won't go away so far as the community is concerned, but the government will not address it. They will not spend the money on it and they are completely obdurate about this issue.
Thanks, Hugh. Mark?
Uh, thanks, Shane. There, there is a precedent occurring at the moment and, um, I share everyone's frustration with Portsea. At Mount Martha North, they have a similar experience. To, to give a short answer to this, Greg Hunt has committed 1.5 million dollars as a, uh, pre-election promise. Um, and he has actually transferred that money to the state government. Now, that was done on the, on the provise that Gelp, Gelp would go and do their remodeling on, um, protecting, uh, the, the front beach, whether that's a groin, whether it's an artificial reef. But that money was to be used for sand replenishment every, every two years for the next ten years. Now, that's very important. Why? Not, not so much for this group here, but it's creating a precedent. So once that is, uh, once that is achieved, we will then move to, to the Portsea Beach because, uh, it's a critical issue. Uh, again, it's part of, part of the environment down here and we need to have a strategic approach to do this. The state government is backing away from it, but we've got some leverage there that we, we really need to deliver on.
Thanks, Mark. New question from Rhonda.
I wanna, I wanna answer this one.
Up. Hang on, Rhonda, one second. You go, Susan.
Um, I've had a proposal for the, uh, Portsea Front Beach for a while. I think a lot of people talk about what they can do and a lot of research is done and I appreciate all that. But the fact of the matter is sometimes you've just got to look at something and say, okay, let's just put something there. And I think that, uh, the solution that I feel would be appropriate would be a big sea bath like at Bronte in Sydney. They have quite a few of them up in New South Wales. It would have the dual purpose of, uh, a, a swimming feature and all that sort of stuff. Also would just stop, um, the, the waves eroding anymore. It would be a solution to everything, not necessarily, uh, the most ideological, uh, solution, but it would be a solution that would just fix it. And sometimes you've got to get past the, the to-ing and fro-ing and just fix it. Like those sandbags, it, it's disgusting that they've been there for ten years and that they've had the nerve to replace them. They've sort of been chit-chatting about it and there's been so many egos involved that no one's ever gonna say this is the definitive thing. No one's, there's always going to be someone who goes, oh, that's not right. I've got a better idea. Just put a sea bath over the top of it and just, that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. Rhonda, new question. Rhonda, your microphone's not on. Turn your microphone on.
Right. Good. Thank you. Um, what's the role of council in encouraging the use of solar energy and other forms of alternative energy on the peninsula? And is it seen as a priority for current developments?
Who would you like to address your question to, Rhonda?
I'm happy for anyone to take that question because I haven't really heard it mentioned tonight.
You go. Why you go, Hugh?
Um, look, solar energy is very important so far. In fact, it's fundamental so far as the council is concerned. And we're spending quite a bit of money making sure that the, as much of the roof as possible as the Yahweh, um, um, swimming, um, facility down in, in Rosebud is concerned, that as much of the roof as possible is covered in solar panels to meet the, um, the energy, the electricity energy requirements of that. On council buildings, we're putting in solar panels extensively to mitigate against our electricity costs in relation to that. Regrettably, the swimming pool at Rosebud is, uh, is going to be gas-fired for heating of the water. I think that's regrettable that it, uh, it was attempted to be pursued in I think that's regrettable, that it was attempted to be pursued in council. We pushed it very hard to look for alternative sources, but all the technical experts came back and said, no, you can't do it. If you put in alternatives, you're going to have to have some other artificial means of heating such as gas anyway. So we're stuck with that so far as the pool's concerned. But these don't help. They all expand our carbon footprint. The council has declared a climate emergency. We put in place a programme to, to not only get our own carbon footprint down, but in relation to getting the carbon footprint down in the community. And we actually have a very good financial hookup with the city of Melbourne for assessing private investment in solar panels on private buildings. And the Rye Hotel is a good example of that. They accessed money through this programme with the Melbourne City Council. The building is assessed, it's approved for finance and it's repaid through the rates scheme. So that on your rates notice are the repayment requirements for the borrowings through this. It's low interest and it's locked in to be repaid through the, the rates notice as a means of repaying. But it's money that's less expensive than commercial rates and it facilitates private borrowings to put on solar panels on private buildings. But with the climate emergency, we, you know, we're endeavouring to encourage the community everywhere to reduce its carbon footprint. And which is why we don't like the idea of the gasification, the regasification plant at Crip Point. And it's all expanding the footprint in the Shire itself and we don't want to achieve that.
Thank you, Hugh. Mark, Mark?
Yes, just quickly, Rhonda, I don't believe enough has been done with solar power. I think it's been very slow to transition, very slow to create policy and very slow to enact.
Okay. Sarah, turn your microphone on.
Come on. Yeah, Rhonda, it's a great question. I think we could do a lot more. And I think Hugh's actually been a big advocate for renewable energy farms on the peninsula. And I think that's something that we could really invest in. It's something that would like come together well, well with the pandemic recovery. If we put renewable farms, that means that will have like renewable energy, locally produced renewable energy, but it'll also provide jobs, which would be, would be great. We'll be looking for more opportunities to provide jobs coming out of the pandemic. So I think we should really be looking at renewable solar farms as well.
Fantastic. Thank you, Sarah. Marty?
Hi, I'm, I'm living and working and studying on the peninsula at the moment. And just, I guess this is a question open to everyone, but maybe in particular to Sarah, she could expand on what she discussed in relation to improving services and wellbeing of young, sorry, services for and wellbeing of young people on the peninsula at the moment. Because there has been a lot of discussion about the values of ratepayers and homeowners on the peninsula, like you discussed, meeting with them. So just wondering, yeah, what the candidates have planned for improving welfare for young people on the peninsula? Thanks.
Okay, great question, Marty. So I've been lucky enough to be talked to a few younger people. And they really, they didn't even know that the local elections were coming up and they didn't know that they were compulsory. So I think there's some sort of, there's some lack of communication that we had, that, that is broadly going along from the local council to the youth. So I think that needs to be improvement. I know there has been quite a lot of improvement over a few councils. I know that's something Antonella Chelley was, has been advocating for, but there's definitely more work we can do with that. Been speaking to a couple of candidates that are standing in other wards about the prospect of having a youth council, which I think I touched on before, which would be actually a body that sits like, like, well, not in with the council, but sits next to the council and they could even have meetings in the chamber. That would be great. That engages the citizens from all of the primary schools and secondary schools on the Mornington Peninsula Shire. Because I think we really need to hear what young people think. I think we can start that from early and then they'll be more engaged in the process. And we need to go out to where young people are. A lot of the time, the Shire thinks that they're consulting with people. There's lots of surveys and stuff, but they're not actually getting to where young people are and talking to them and asking them what they want. We need to find out what they want. I do understand that public transport is young people and mental health services as well. So we need to make sure that they're being aided for and we really do need to advocate for more public transport so that young people have more opportunities to get around more employment opportunities, more educational opportunities. Public transport really factors into that for young people.
Thank you, Sarah. Janice? All quiet. Michelle and Gary, did you want to comment on Marty's question?
Yeah, just to say, I agree totally with Sarah. But I also think it comes down to employment too, because I think we lose so many of that. That, you know, tourism industry and construction jobs are available, but I think it needs to be wider than that. So it is, it is sort of pushing for employment in other areas, like the technology park that I think John Duck, the CEO, is trying to have happen at first. And I think there's also the research centre that's been funded by the government at Point Leprechaun Park. But I think it's looking at sort of alternatives and not just putting things into a box. You've got to sort of get employed in a cafe or a building site. So I think if you want to keep this here and sort of have a more balanced population, then we've got to look at alternatives.
Gary, did you want to comment?
Yes, please. There have been, well, there's been some controversy about bike, bike tracks around the place, BMX bike tracks. I think there's one in, in particular out on the dark side of the peninsula, Creek Point Way. And Rhonda would be aware of one in the Flinders Street, the Flinders Street, the New Flinders Street Park. Council, instead of, you know, blocking those things and stopping the kids from using them because they want to escape from the traditional regimented type of activities available to them, especially if they're disaffected use and they don't feel part of that type of community. I think it'd be good to, to put aside particular areas where they are, where that kind of activity is allowed, perhaps informally. And it's, like I said, especially disaffected use. When going through the 10 years, you, you're rebelling against regimented activities. And so sort of controlling things too much can, can just leave them to, leave them further disaffected because they, they're just out of their bar of it.
Thank you, Gary. Now, Hugh, did you want to comment?
Just a brief question, which I'd just like to share with everyone, a bit of a vision for Rosebud. With the aquatic centre being built in Rosebud as it is, and you've got the proximity of the secondary school there and you've got two primary schools, I would like to see that area, particularly with the schools there, developing as an area of excellence. I mean, you've got a school, you've got an excellent secondary college there. You'll have the swimming pool structure. I'd like to see the council offices get out of Biscoe Street. I would like that to see, be seen as a, as a public library and arts and recreation centre as well. So that that whole precinct there could be a most wonderful centre of excellence for our young people in Rosebud. Needs a bit of vision to achieve it, but the, the proximity of the council offices there and creating a large public library space for the kids to work after school and do their homework, I think would be sensational. All the facilities are there, it's just waiting to happen.
Thank you, Hugh. Now, Janet was, we had a question coming from Janet. But all is quiet there. We'll hold you, I'll hold your place in the queue, Janet, if you appear again. Philip has a question in relation to and the Mornington Peninsula being part of Melbourne.
So on the chat, it was, what is your opinion of the Mornington Peninsula Shire being part of Greater Melbourne? To all, all candidates.
You go first. Go on, Gary. Why don't you go?
Okay. I don't think there's anything out, the majority of people on the Mornington Peninsula want out of the metropolitan area. I'm not aware of the details of funding arrangements that some people suggest are an advantage to us as a result of being part of the Metropolitan Melbourne area. But it definitely has an impact on, on our planning controls, which is, which have been mentioned before. I think in particular the Napaian Ward is special in regard to planning because it's, it's a unique geological area below the, west of the wetlands is basically a sand dune with coastal bush on it. And that needs to be considered in relation to fire risk mitigation and vegetation destruction. I think it should be a matter of destruction without decimation. And the planning scheme is basically decimating many areas as they are developed. They're just wiping out all the vegetation whatsoever. So it's out of Melbourne metropolitan area.
Thank you, Gary. Hugh, can I ask a question of you, please? Related to that topic?
Yep, happy to talk.
Given your time on the council, is there a logical explanation? Was, at some point in time, did the Mornington Peninsula Shire or its predecessor organisation actually seek to be part of Melbourne?
No, it happened as a matter of state government policy back in the Haymer years. And that happened when the green wedges were established coming out of Melbourne. And the, what we have here is the green wedge. And all of our townships, all of our urban areas have an urban growth boundary, confining urban development within the non-green wedge areas. And that's to protect the green wedge and to prevent development occurring in it. Now, there is this tension. None of us want to be labelled with, we are part of Metropolitan Melbourne. We all hate that idea. We've chosen to live here. We hate the idea that we are part of Melbourne and part of the, the whole suburban ethos. But the reality is that that actually underpins our planning scheme and it underpins our green wedge and it prevents the development of the green wedge in ways which are not appropriate. So if we're going to discard this concept of Metro Melbourne, we're going to have to find a substitute in our planning scheme to, to, to protect the green wedge. As for funding, the Shire, yes, it's shut out of Commonwealth regional funding, but it does receive state funding in terms of growing suburbs funding. And I think from recollection that the money that's come from the state government to, for the rejuvenation of Rye, the 6.5 million with council money is, is growing suburbs money. So we need to do a cost benefit analysis as to whether we're better being regional or whether we're better being metropolitan so far as funding is concerned. But as to the COVID emergency, there are other reasons why we got lumped in with that. And it didn't help at the outset that there was a major sell with all those people that came back from Aspen. It hasn't been helped that there was a major breakout at the Frankston Hospital and in an aged care facility here. So the government had good reasons for lumping us in, but we hate the idea of it. We don't like it. I'd like to get rid of it, but we have to find a substitute or we'll destroy the green wedge.
Thank you, Hugh. Michelle, you had your hand up?
I think, I think covered with probably more detail than I would have been able to do.
Okay. Fantastic. Noella?
Yes.
Do you have a similar, a related question or a fresh question?
Yes, I did. I'm volunteer for the Sorrento Information Centre down on Main Street, Sorrento. And I just feel for the shopkeepers and the, also the people that provide accommodation for the tourists. What are your thoughts about helping to re-establish that for the next, over the next 12 months, please, to any candidate that wants to address it?
I mean, I think the economic recovery package is a big part of the next four years. So really looking how to help businesses just get back to that level of prosperity and looking at new businesses coming in because there's a lot that I'm not going to open up. I mean, you can see that now in, in sort of empty spaces in full size of the window. So the shape of the peninsula, the peninsula, will be quite different in four years' time from what it is now. And I think the council as a whole, a team, they work very hard and if you try to, you get people involved, you invest again in this end of the mission. But then also the dependence on tourism. And I think that's, that's sort of, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Sarah, microphone on?
Yeah, I'll overgo that question. I think there's a lot we will, will need to do as a council to get our tourism and accommodation businesses back on track. And actually, we probably can't say anything definitive because who knows what, you know, if there'll be a third wave of this pandemic. But hopefully we can look at doing, reigniting, I guess, our high streets. We may need to look at how the council can play a major part in that. I think there was a councillor from the, from the Melbourne City Council, he wrote an article about this issue. And he said that maybe the, the different councils will actually maybe be able to reignite them by putting some of their services onto the high street. So maybe having some of their walk-up services, they could actually have a shop. And that would help bring people to the, to the high streets again, to the shopping strips. And then maybe that we can look at having like pop-up, we can work with the landlords on rents and stuff because we know that they can be quite expensive, especially down this way when people make their money over summer. So that could look like pop-up shops for like young makers, you know? Could they have a pop-up shop for a while? Could we have art galleries? Could we have live music venues? Because there's lots of people that are looking for more places to play live music. So how can we reinvigorate our high streets to start with and making them a place that the community wants to come back to? On the accommodation front, that's, that's a bit trickier, isn't it? Because we really don't know how this pandemic's going to turn out. But I've been lucky enough to speak to a few businesses about this sort of thing. And we were talking about having a festival down on the, in the Napaian Ward. That would be a bit like South by Southwest, that could be held in venues. So that it wouldn't depend on the weather. So you could hold it in, in May to get people down here when it's cold and a bit revolting. And that, that could, they could then also partner. So yeah, you could have like a concert at the Sorrento Community Centre and they could partner with, say, a charity. So there could be a whole lot of things that go on and could be really exciting that we could do. But it'll all be with the thing in mind that we don't really know where this pandemic is going yet. But there's a lot of things that we can do, which is exciting. Thank you.
That's good. Thanks, Sarah. One comment, if I may, Sarah. Yeah, I'll be with you one minute, Suzanne. If you, if you are looking, looking at festivals, can I suggest there be some consultation with the Sorrento Rotary Club and the Sorrento Community Centre? Because there is planning going on at the moment, specifically in relation to that through the middle weeks of May, March.
Yeah, it would be great. Wouldn't it be great if we had all the different community organisations working together on like a, a great, amazing festival or festivals throughout the year?
It would be.
And that's, that's why I have my hand up, because we're fairly advanced with that planning, sorry. But the whole point of Sorrento Community TV was also to bring all the community groups together and to be able to spruce what they do, you know, what their members are, what their point is. And bit by bit, we're getting people on so that locals and visitors alike can just go on to Sorrento Community TV and say what's on, whether it be school holidays or any time of the year. And that includes all the sporting clubs, CFA, life-saving, all of that stuff as well. But the Labor Day weekend in March is absolutely there and we're consulting with the traders at the moment. It's off the back of the Normal Art Show that happens in January. It's been transferred to the Labor Day weekend. So it'll be an art craft show out of this community centre, but there'll be heaps of other stuff as well. So stand by, we're working our little whatever's off to get that to happen.
Susan?
I'm really optimistic about tourism in our ward. It's only a tiny, when you look at it, it's not a really big area, landmass. We're sort of bound by beaches on both sides. We've got beautiful shops down here, which a lot of them are still staying, open to their credit, which is great. We've got also a lot of like the federal government incentives and to keep, to keep like the Jobkeeper and all that sort of. Of all the places in Victoria, the, this peninsula is going to, is going to really probably fare better than. Of all the places in Victoria, this peninsula is gonna, is gonna really, probably fare better than a lot. A lot of people aren't going to want to travel overseas. A lot of people aren't going to want to even leave the state. They're going to be just, you know, just sort of quite happy to stay where they are, knowing they feel quite safe. And I think that our tourism will show that. And I think that if we can get over the Christmas hump with no, with no caravan park people here, then I think that, and that will be, people, businesses will be compensated through that period till March. So if we can get over that hump, then we can do that. And then we can have like not only a festival, but little farmers markets. Like maybe, you know, one, maybe little night markets, all on the footy oval, of course. Or somewhere that's got a bit of space, even, even the bit of road near, in between Bowen Road and St Paul's Road in Sorento. And I'm sure every little township has these areas. And we could have little, just like produce markets and stuff. And as long as we don't sort of get too carried away and get upset with the scheduling of the markets. Because they, they can be a little bit tough to negotiate.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Look, it's a, it's a very good question. It's the sixth of October today. Christmas decorations will be out very shortly, I'd imagine, in the stores. Most Victorians won't be able to get out of their borders because we're not, we're not welcome. So I expect there to be a lot of people flooding down here for various reasons. Whether they're allowed to or whether they're not, I guess that's a debatable one. But we will have a lot of people here. I don't know whether businesses will be confident enough to reopen or will be prepared to reopen or are capable to reopen. They need to take a lot of confidence in rebuilding stock and capital expenditure. So we need to think about how we're going to do that. I don't think it's a magic pudding that's just going to happen overnight. You might have transient stores, but we need to look at how we rebuild our main streets. Not only just for Christmas, but how we move that forward and make it sustainable. There's no point in being open, people capitalising for a couple of months and then disappearing. We really do need to build sustainable small business. The small business will create employment and we're talking about our youth. That's what we need to encourage our youth to do, to, to work with those small businesses. Whether we incentivise small businesses to, to take on youth, to assist them in building their self-esteem and their value in the community. Because I do believe that social injustice is an area that's only going to get bigger. But we need to plan for that. And I'm very confident that a new council with fresh ideas will be able to work collaboratively, collaboratively together and to move things forward very quickly.
Thank you.
Gary?
I have no magic solution for this. I think the basic problem is there aren't any customers. And that, that's where the root of the problem is. So you can't encourage people down here at the moment by having festivals, et cetera. A lot of work's already, already done in that area down here. We have a, basically an economic structural problem down here because it relies so much on tourism that it's a very volatile industry. Because tourism relies on the discretionary expenditure of those people who, who come and spend that extra money. Now, when there's not enough money, they haven't got that, that discretionary fund to draw on and, and come down here. And the effect of this COVID pandemic is going to leave a lot of people without funds for discretionary spending for quite some time. Apart from the, those who are very well off. So that is a problem. What the, the other industries that we have down here, construction, servicing, health, all those industries rely basically on the retirement population. And of course, they service each other and themselves, food industry, et cetera, for, for that purpose. So it's going to be a hard nut to crack. And I don't think encouraging people down here, if they haven't got the money to, to spend, is going to do very much for it, unless we bring in shiploads of immigrants perhaps. But that's just being ridiculous, I know.
Okay. Thank you. Just let me flick across the screen, Simon? Undo your microphone.
Got me there? Yeah. I think we've got a great opportunity here because we can learn a lot from what's happened in Europe and America in regards to how COVID is transmitted. And my understanding is that a lot of places there are opening up outdoors. And so I think that's something that we can do here. And if we can, yeah, collaborate with council and, and, and people who know how to run events and pubs like, I've got a great relationship with Rob Pitt. And I do think that council should be open up, start to be open to running outdoor areas. So you might have a, give a bit of an advantage for people to do, put their seats out in front of their shops rather than inside. Because from what I'm hearing is that's more likely to transmit COVID indoors and outdoors.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think there's an initiative in the latest council newsletter about a similar scheme. Hugh, can you confirm that for me?
Yes, that is the case. Council has some quite world developed plans to, to enable footpath, as it were, footpath and parklets trading. So that instead of being limited within the confines of our existing policy as to how many tables and chairs you can have outside, we're actually working on significantly extended areas outside shops and perhaps including adjoining parking spots as well in the street. So council has this well and truly fully advanced. And it's a question of using this as best we can to transition to putting these arrangements in place as soon as possible so that people can start using it, can generate activity in the businesses. And it can be a gradual opening up in anticipation of what might be significant numbers of visitors coming down over the Christmas, New Year holiday period, which will be a real challenge. And we need the time and we need transition arrangements to be put in place, particularly by the state government, to enable this to, to occur. The council has very, very highly developed plans. We're encouraging these permits and we're facilitating them being granted.
Thank you. Noella, do you have another question?
No, I don't. Thank you, Jane.
No worries. Okay, we've been, we've been talking for an hour and three quarters. So it's probably reasonable that we draw the event to a close. But before I do that, has somebody got a desperate question they need to ask and they haven't had the opportunity to do so? Nope. All silent on the Western Front. Thank you. Thank you to our candidates for being prepared to participate in tonight. We very much appreciate it. From a Sorento Community Centre point of view, we're really pleased to be able to provide tonight's forum. We see this just one example of our, our role in working with community. I urge you all to follow up tonight's session on Sorento Community TV. It will be available there for you to view and listen and hear, hear the questions. Michelle, your microphone was playing up a bit, as you well know. But if anyone has a specific question that they asked of Michelle and they're unable to pick up on her answer, feel free to write, email Michelle directly because her email address is all over town. Or you can email through the centre and we'll pass it on. In addition, the, you can also view information about the centre on our website, where we address a range of community issues and activities and facilities that are available at our centre. If you're not on our mailing list, we'd love to include you. And all you need to do is send an email to admin@sorentocommunitycentre. That's about it. But finally, thank you to all of you who have participated and come to listen to what our candidates have to say. We hope you found the evening to be enlightening and useful. And once again, thank you. And particularly, Hugh, very early in the piece, you acknowledged both Heather and me.
Yes.
Please, please, everybody should know, I didn't do a real lot. Heather did all the work.
That was a given.
Congratulations to all of you for putting this together. It's been a terrific effort.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All the best. And good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.